Good evening. It is six ten P M on Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, and I would like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome those who are participating in the Board of Education meeting in person and those watching the meeting via live streaming on YouTube. We would ask that anyone addressing the board to please use the microphone at the podium and to identify themselves for the record. As a reminder, the link to this meeting is on the district webpage under Board of Education. The streaming will run through the end of the meeting. In the event there is a disruption in the streaming, I will pause the meeting until it is reestablished. We have all five board members present. We have a quorum. We're moving to item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are pleased to welcome two students to lead the pledge. Haley Leah Gomez from Los Angeles Family School and Gage Jordan Burkhart from Century High School. Would you please join me at the front? Thank you very much. And I get to turn around and smile at everyone. Very friendly group. Mrs. Chavis, would you please read their bios?
Please allow me to introduce the Los Angeles Family School pledge leader for this month, Haley Lee Gomez. She is the daughter of Joey Gomez and Renee Pacheco. Haley began her educational journey with the Los Angeles School District at Los Angeles Elementary. She then joined Los Angeles Family School in sixth grade. This is her third year at Los Angeles Family School, where she is now an eighth grader. Haley's teachers describe her as an exceptional student who shines through her dedication, kindness, and leadership. She consistently stays on top of her assignments, approaches learning with curiosity, and asks thoughtful questions that enrich class discussions. Beyond her own academics, Haley goes out of her way to support her peers, offering help when someone is struggling and inviting those who are alone to join her, ensuring everyone feels included. Her warmth, respectfulness, and strong character make her a valued member of our school community, and her willingness to take responsibility for her own learning sets a powerful example for others. Always considerate of those around her, Haley truly embodies the qualities we are proud to see in a Centurian. After middle school, Haley looks forward to continuing her academic journey at Century High School and the hybrid program with her long-term goal of pursuing a career as a veterinarian. Please allow me to introduce the Century High School pledge leader for this month, Gage Jordan Burkhart. He is the son of Josh Burkhart and Linda Dummler. Gage's educational journey with the Los Angeles School District began at Los Angeles Elementary pre-K, followed by Sundance Elementary. For middle school, he attended Los Angeles Family School. This is Gage's third year at Century High School, where he is a junior and is looking forward to graduating with the class of twenty twenty seven. As a true Centurian, Gage shines as a role model of positivity and kindness. He consistently brings an uplifting attitude to school each day, making a point to check in on both his peers and staff to ensure everyone feels supported. In the classroom, Gage is highly engaged in his learning and is always eager to lend a hand, helping others grasp new concepts and succeed alongside him. Each morning, he warmly greets everyone at the door, creating a welcoming environment that sets the tone for the entire day at C H S. His genuine care and concern for others not only strengthens our school community, but also inspires those around him. Through his active participation in school life, Gage has naturally grown into a leader, especially for our younger students, showing them what it means to embody the Centurian spirit. After high school, Gage aspires to pursue higher education and is exploring his options as he thoughtfully considers which college will be the best fit for his future.
Mrs. Chavis, would you please read their bios?
Please allow me to introduce the Los Angeles Family School pledge leader for this month, Haley Lee Gomez. She is the daughter of Joey Gomez and Renee Pacheco. Haley began her educational journey with the Los Angeles School District at Los Angeles Elementary. She then joined Los Angeles Family School in sixth grade. This is her third year at Los Angeles Family School, where she is now an eighth grader. Haley's teachers describe her as an exceptional student who shines through her dedication, kindness, and leadership. She consistently stays on top of her assignments, approaches learning with curiosity, and asks thoughtful questions that enrich class discussions. Beyond her own academics, Haley goes out of her way to support her peers, offering help when someone is struggling and inviting those who are alone to join her, ensuring everyone feels included. Her warmth, respectfulness, and strong character make her a valued member of our school community, and her willingness to take responsibility for her own learning sets a powerful example for others. Always considerate of those around her, Haley truly embodies the qualities we are proud to see in a Centurian. After middle school, Haley looks forward to continuing her academic journey at Century High School and the hybrid program with her long-term goal of pursuing a career as a veterinarian. Please allow me to introduce the Century High School pledge leader for this month, Gage Jordan Burkhart. He is the son of Josh Burkhart and Linda Dummler. Gage's educational journey with the Los Angeles School District began at Los Angeles Elementary pre-K, followed by Sundance Elementary. From middle school, he attended Los Angeles Family School. This is Gage's third year at Century High School, where he is a junior and is looking forward to graduating with the class of twenty twenty seven. As a true Centurian, Gage shines as a role model of positivity and kindness. He consistently brings an uplifting attitude to school each day, making a point to check in on both his peers and staff to ensure everyone feels supported. In the classroom, Gage is highly engaged in his learning and is always eager to lend a hand, helping others grasp new concepts and succeed alongside him. Each morning, he warmly greets everyone at the door, creating a welcoming environment that sets the tone for the entire day at C H S. His genuine care and concern for others not only strengthens our school community, but also inspires those around him. Through his active participation in school life, Gage has naturally grown into a leader, especially for our younger students, showing them what it means to embody the Centurian spirit. After high school, Gage aspires to pursue higher education and is exploring his options as he thoughtfully considers which college will be the best fit for his future.
Thank you very much. Nice job. Thank you very much. Congratulations. I'll let you guys go together. Thank you very much.
Let's give another round of applause to Haley and Gage.
Very nicely done. I would like to invite you now because our meetings are so exciting and informative that if you have anything else in the world you want to do, like go home and vacuum, now is the time to leave. You can stay. You are welcome. But if you honestly want to escape, now is the time to do it. And if you need to, it is your choice. Okay, on to item C. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing your children with us. Nice job. Okay, we are on to item C, announcement of the meeting. Mrs. Chavis, would you please announce the meeting?
This meeting has been announced in accordance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act and the Los Angeles Schools Open Meetings Resolution, and is a legally constituted meeting of the Los Angeles Schools Board of Education.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Chavis. We are on item D, approval of the agenda. Mrs. Chavis, are there interchanges or dilutions to the agenda?
Yes, I have a proposed change to the agenda this evening. I would like to remove item, agenda item L. Eight, approval of M O U between Valencia County and L O S for in-venue prevention, education, and student community access program at district athletic events.
Thank you very much. I would stand for a motion regarding the approval of the revised agenda. Madam President. Ms. Simoyah.
I move that we accept the agenda as revised by Mrs. Chavis.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mrs. Simoyah has both, and Mr. Bennett has seconded to approve the agenda with the removal of item L eight, approval of M O U between Valencia County and Los Angeles Schools for in-venue prevention, education, and student community access program at district athletic events. Is there any discussion?
I'm sure.
Yes, Mr. Bickers.
So the next meeting that we would address that would be.
I believe that we'll wait for Mrs. Chavis. When she said that she had some other conversations she wanted to have, to have better information. So it could be that it comes up on the October meeting.
So it's tied to athletic events.
It is.
We've already had a home game, so you know, we're just missing that in other events. I was wondering, what's going to be left after we actually pass it?
The entire winter season.
She said that with absolutely no exhaustion.
Okay.
Good question, Mr. Bickers. Are there any other questions or items for discussion on this particular agenda item? I will call for the vote then. Mrs. Simoyah, your motion?
I vote yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Otero?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. We are now on to item D, which is public comment. I'm following my script and I've got a, yes, it's on item D. Thank you very much. Okay. Mrs. Chav, Mrs. Chavis or Mrs. Wolf, how many speakers have signed up to provide comment at tonight's meeting?
We have two.
Thank you very much. Before we move to public comment, I would like to remind our audience of the board's procedures for handling public comment, which are found in Board Policy B dash two one five zero B E D H. Public comment is limited to five minutes per individual speaker. However, the board president may further restrict or waive time limits based on the number of speakers. The board welcomes public input. Personal attacks on board members, staff, personnel, or other persons, however, will not be permitted. With the exception of the superintendent, by New Mexico statute, the board cannot involve themselves individually or collectively in any district-related employment decisions. The board may be required to serve as the appeal authority on an employee's appeal and must remain neutral and objective. As a result, the board must remain uninformed about the specifics of personnel matters until these matters are fully resolved. In light of the board's role as chair, I will not call on persons who have submitted requests to speak about any negative or concerning conduct or perceptions of any district employee as doing so could unfairly bias the board. Instead, please contact the superintendent directly about concerns related to any employee of the district. The first person I would like to call up, please, and I would invite you to the podium, is Mrs. Amanda Candelaria. Are you here? Mrs. Candelaria, I want to warn you, our microphones are a little sensitive, so you kind of have to be close, but not too close.
I understand.
Okay, thank you very much. You have five minutes.
My understanding is that our, our concerns regarding an employee need to be brought to the superintendent based on what you just stated.
That is correct.
So if that is the case, then I would need to withhold my statement so that I can speak to the superintendent prior to this meeting.
I thank you very much for your cooperation.
Thank you.
The next person is Christina Lash. Are you present? Please.
Hello. Based off of what we just heard, I'm going to also have to decline until I speak to Susan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your cooperation. We are on item F. Approval of consent items. I would stand for a motion regarding the consent items.
You signed up online?
I'm sorry.
You know what? Today, I didn't check that. I wanted to talk to them, so I'm going to take my.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Do we have another person?
Yes, we do.
Oh, I am so sorry. If you would please state your name clearly for us for the record.
Yes, my name is Brienne Royball, and I did call because it was after one thirty, just so you know. And thank you, members of the board, for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Brienne Royball, and I'm the parent of two boys who attend Catherine Gallegos Elementary. The other day, only one of my children got off my, off the bus. Where's my brother? My son asked, and panic immediately set in. I grabbed my phone and looked up the transportation department. To my shock, it said they were closed. How can they possibly be closed when students are still on buses, not yet safely home? Isn't the job to ensure every child arrives at their destination before the day is done? I called anyway, hoping to reach someone after hours. Instead, I got an automated message with no one to reach in case of an emergency. My heart sank. Next, I called Catherine Gallegos Elementary. I tried to stay calm, telling myself my son was probably still on the bus, lost in a book, and missed a stop. Ask me how I know. He doesn't have a cell phone, something I don't believe in for children, but in that moment, I wish he did have one. A kind staff member at K G eight answered the phone. I explained that only one of my children had come home and asked if someone could page the bus to see if my other son was still on board. She told me they could not. If the transportation center is unavailable and the school has no way to reach a bus driver, how is a parent supposed to get help in a situation like this? The secretary offered to check with his teacher. I didn't believe my son was still at school. I was sure he was probably still on the bus, but it was good to cover all my bases. I thanked her, left my information, and hung up. Meanwhile, I continued my frantic search for someone who could actually contact the bus. I called the district administration, and while a staff member answered, she too did not have the ability to reach the bus directly. She could only try the other transportation center. By this point, I was in full panic. I don't know how long it had been, but it was too long. I had expected answers by then, and none were available. The woman on the phone could hear the fear in my voice, and I could hear the worry in hers. And then, just as about, as I was about to go into full-blown mama bear mode, the bus pulled up and my son came running. All was well. My son had simply been too focused on his drawing and missed a stop. I am thankful to the bus driver who had to backtrack on their route to deliver my child safely and for the staff members who did answer the phone. But to those who did not answer, why not? Parents deserve a way to quickly and, a way to quickly and directly reach transportation staff when a child does not arrive home as expected. The current system left me terrified and helpless in what could have been a very serious situation. They have no business going home until they know all of their students have arrived safely. I urge the district to review its communication and transportation safety protocols. Parents should never be left without a way to reach someone who can account for their child. I urge the district to review and strengthen its communication and transportation safety protocols. At minimum, transportation staff should remain available until each bus has transported, reported back that its route is complete and every child is accounted for. In addition, school sites should be given the ability to directly contact bus drivers when students' whereabouts are in question. Parents must never again be left without a way to reach someone who can confirm the safety and well-being of their child. Thank you for taking this seriously.
Thank you very much. Are we good?
We have no other status.
Great. I'm moving on. I am on item F. Approval of consent items. Would stand for a motion regarding the consent items.
Madam President.
Mr. Otero.
I moved at the board, the consent, approved the entire consent sheet as presented with the exception of item number. L three B. Data Links Incorporated for Los Angeles High School Auditorium Phase Two. A V Improvements. Thirty-one four hundred and thirty-one two hundred Capital Outlay Special Appropriations and House Bill five oh five C O eight six.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Otero has moved, and Mr. Bennett has seconded to approve the consent, the consent agenda, which those items are listed with an asterisk on the agenda. With the exception of L. There it is, eight. No, I'm sorry. Oh, or three, sorry, L three B. Data Links Incorporated for Los Angeles High School Auditorium Phase Two. A V Improvements out of Funds three one four zero zero and Fund three one two zero zero Capital Outlays Special Appropriations and House Bill five oh five C dash zero eight six. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, I would first like to say before I call for the vote, for the benefit of the audience, consent items are the action items on the agenda presented by the superintendent and staff for approval. All agenda items have been reviewed by the board members individually. If no discussion has been asked regarding these items by any of the board members, the action items may be submitted for approval with one motion or vote. The action items that are not consented will be discussed prior to action being taken. Having no discussion, I will call for the vote. Mr. Otero, it is your motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoyah?
I vote yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes five zero. We are now on item. H, item H, Superintendent of Schools Report. Ma'am? Mr. Bennett? Mrs. Chavis, item H. I apologize. I know we're all a little flustered today.
The door shut and I was distracted. I would like to bring up Miss Tracy as part of our monthly construction update.
Hey, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Chavis. So this is the construction update for September. And we have some of the projects around the district that have been completed. We have the L L E playground equipment has been installed and completed. We still have three schools left to have their playground equipment that we purchased last fiscal year installed. And the next one will be at Tome Elementary will be on October first. And then we will have the other two schools each month. So we are doing one school installation a month.
Is that the special education?
The next completion is the Valencia Middle School Parent Drive Adjustments. There were some areas that the, the path, the, the drive was widened, and there were some fencing changes. And we will be also doing a few curbing in, in the month to come. Also, the Century High School Library Furniture Refresh. Right now, the maintenance ends. Century staff are working on packing up the library and clearing out existing furniture, and the new furniture will be installed in November. Also, we have the Valencia High School and the three hundred building. It will be installing a new HVAC unit on September twentieth. And those are some of the current projects.
On that, on that sound, are they going to be removing the boiler from that area, just going strictly with combo heat code?
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know. Not my area. Yeah. We'll find out.
I think he asks us those questions every time to see if we're paying attention.
So replacing the boiler. I don't recall purchasing a boiler, so. I will have to give a tip me on that. Okay. The Los Angeles High School Stadium Improvements is, there is still just a few things on the punch list that need to be worked on, but the majority of everything is complete enough to where we have been able to use it, and it is ongoing, being able to use during the football games. Brought to Elementary, the demo of the final building is on its way. You can see it in the picture off to the side there. And the new parent drop-off loop is being completed this month. Building plaque was installed, which highlights a mascot design that was designed by one of the Broughta Elementary students last year. And here is a picture of our warehouse team. We are now fully staffed. And if you recall last budget, we did add one employee to the warehouse team. There they all are. We are finally staffed. We also had one replacement.
Is that the new truck, too?
I believe so.
That is awesome.
Yeah, so the other one didn't look that nice.
It's nice and shiny.
Graphic on there. It's, it's small. No, it's like, size of the other one, and we'll talk about that. There's another one that we're going to talk about in a moment. It would be nice so that we just don't, it looks like. Yes, that's great.
Do you have any other questions? Instruction.
Bickers, any questions over any of the updates? Bennett?
Thank you.
Mr. Otero?
No.
Mrs. Simoyah?
No.
I want to say I was at the Los Angeles High School Football Stadium over the last couple of Friday nights. My husband thinks that I will not do any expensive dates with him on Friday because he gets to go to football games where he really gets invested in the games, and he's enjoyed them. So anyway, the stadium is gorgeous. The walk-in is beautiful. Great crowd control. Nice and clean. The restroom facilities are beautiful and spacious and well-lit. And the concession stand is wonderful. So congratulations to every person who had their hand in that, from purchasing or approving R F Ps to organizing people and unlocking gates, et cetera. It is absolutely outstanding. So it's very nice. And I did get to engage a little bit with real ranchos visitors as long as we had some visitors from El Dorado, I think this last weekend. And they were really impressed. I kept hearing, gosh, this community is up and coming. You guys have such a nice stadium. So special kudos. Congratulations. It's beautiful.
Yeah. And now we'll transition to the finance report. Well, Miss Tracy is getting that slide up. I do want to note that we received information last week about the governor's new program to provide universal daycare for all families, and there is no longer a, an income maximum. So all families will be eligible for free daycare. We do have daycare in our school district. We have kitty cats daycare that does support our employees who have young children. And we also have Project Keys. It's been a longstanding program at our similar elementary schools. So as we navigate through those new executive orders, we will be able to provide our families with more information regarding how they complete the application to have free daycare. So exciting, and it's supposed to lift off the ground November first. So we have quite a bit of work ahead of us in the next six weeks until November first comes around. So we will start adding that to our finance reports as well, so you can see the impact.
Great.
And we will, looking at that, there does look, there does appear to be at first glance, the final. And we will, looking at that, there does look, there does appear to be at first glance, the final requirements are not. But at first glance, there, at first glance, there does appear to be an increase in the pay for daycare providers.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So we'll be looking through that as well.
So do you anticipate Mrs. Chavez with the increase of the daycare providers? Do you, and I know we don't have great details now, so I know I'm asking you to speculate. So please don't hold her accountable for me, her responding to my request. Do we anticipate that since we have two daycare centers established? That they would possibly be registered and approved on the governor's list? And then the funding would be kind of like a flow through thing similar to what we do with our other. Federal grants that are flow through grants. Do we kind of anticipate that kind of a model?
Yes, we do. We already have, our Project Keys programs are already approved through the E C E C D and I will. Terrible mess this up. I finally say all the letters correctly because it's not easy to roll off your tongue, but it's the early. Childs. Childcare and early childhood education department. As part of that Project Keys and Kitty Cats daycare fall in those departments. So there are some people who are already eligible for the tuition assistance for the daycare. And it does go through an application process and then that money does come directly through that application process after they're approved. That money is funded through the state directly to our accounts in our district.
Okay, are, are both of those programs at max capacity or do we have room?
So we have room, but we have a hard time staffing those programs. Because the schedules are not standard, specifically for Project Keys, because it's a split shift.
So pre, pre instructional day and then post instructional day?
Correct, so there's a wide gap in between the day and that doesn't fit many people's schedules. They like to work a continuous number of hours, whereas Project Keys, I believe starts around six thirty in the morning. And then completes depending on the start of the school day and they, at this time, they're both at the eight fifty start. So they finish about nine o'clock and then they return back to work at about three o'clock and they complete their day at six o'clock.
So are we, are we considering or are we thinking about possibly with this additional option for funding and especially with an increased hourly rate? That we could possibly expand. Uh, what we offer as opposed to just a split shift or is it bound because of the type of.
It would be bound because it's before and after school daycare. That's what it's approved for.
Okay.
And we would love to have it at all our elementary schools. We need to find the staff.
Oh.
And it's hard to fill with the split shift.
Okay. Alrighty. I see we have your finance report up. There we go.
Okay, Madam President, Members of the Board Superintendent Chavez. So again, we have the state finances. This is. All of our funds that we have, that we have budget authority. There could be other funds that will be added throughout the year, but you will see those as bars coming in. For anything to be changed from this point. At this point, the total of this agrees to what we have on our O B M S system, which is. What we use to communicate with P E D, the finances. Uh, the first column. Well, we have the fund, we have the fund description and then we have the budget authority. So the budget authority is what we have asked P E D. Depending on what award or what our estimate will be for the, for that fund. What we're estimating, that is what we. Have the authority to be able to spend. This whole, this spreadsheet right here is looking at expenses only. The next column is the budget authority after the bars. So if you recall. You would have seen a bar in a new, a brand new fund. For a hundred fifty thousand is, so if you go down, you'll see whenever I have a bar or anything that's changing. I highlight it in blue and that will be, once the bar is approved. That will be the number that it will be changed to. If you go down a little. Should there, that blue one. Spent or encumbered is the next column and that shows. What we have on our books at this point. Or anything that we might have cut a check for or anything that we have encumbered. For people on payroll contracts. Which is a reason why if you look at our operational. It already has a very large sum of expense in there for such an early point in. In the fiscal year and that is because all of our, anyone on a contract. Their payroll expenses are already in here. They already encumbered into the cost. Then the next column is the balance remaining, those, so that is taking our budget authority after bars. Less what has been spent or encumbered, giving a balance remaining. The next column then is the percentage remaining, so kind of to give you an idea of where we're at. And like I had mentioned earlier. The operational has like twenty eight percent, which really seems really kind of scary for so early in the beginning of the year. But when you consider the fact that the majority, a larger majority of our expenses are our salaries and that is already. Uh, people on contracts, it's already either the portion that's been paid so far and the amount that's encumbered on their. Due to their contract. Um, again, you'll see the kind of the norms that we have in the transportation already in showing in the negative. And that's because again, all the salaries are already encumbered. Uh, we also have the child care block grant is already in the negative. Because of salaries being encumbered. And those funds not supporting the funds themselves, which is something that I'm always aware of, so it is something. That I budget for in operational to cover those, so it's no surprise. Then at the bottom, it kind of gives you an overall where we're at. All funds together. We're at thirty percent, thirty seven percent remaining. Last month, we were forty one percent. Uh, the next one is. This is in response to Dr. Osowski mentioning she'd like to see the federal funds also in the revenue report. So. Uh, so this is brand new for you guys. So what I did here is I'm listing all of the funds again. And. Then I have the fund description and the budgeted revenue. So actually, if you were to look at. Budgeted revenue, in some cases, the fund. That budgeted amount will be the same for expense as it will be for the revenue. If you look at the first one operational, the numbers differ. We have budget authority to spend. Uh, the budget authority we have to spend in expenses is greater than what I expected receive in revenue. And that is because some of our budget is cash that we, we're budgeting an estimate of the cash that is remaining. So if you. Extract out the cash, you are left with just, just what is budgeted, what expected to come in as revenue this year. So that is what you're seeing, a majority of that is S E G. The next column I have. Is the revenue we have received so far since I worked on this. What we've received in total. That could differ from current revenue. So the next column what I have is prior year revenue. So right now, a lot of the time, a lot of these funds. We have revenue that's come in, but it's actually from last year's revenue. So. Say we ask for an R F R in, in June. And it's not getting paid until July. So that money is coming in in July, so it's coming in in the new fiscal year, but it was really paying an R F R from the prior year. So when I'm comparing on, when I'm budgeting the revenue, I'm budgeting for the revenue that we're expecting to see. In come in this fiscal year for this fiscal year.
So you don't include those. Other amounts.
I will, and it comes in and it's in our pot of revenue for. For. As we, we're gonna label it to where it comes in for that fund. But it was really meant for last year on some cases, not all. So I've put in a separate column showing you how much of the revenue that's come in. Is really net is from last year.
Okay.
And then the difference between that is going to be what's come in so far for the current year. And that kind of, you kind of, kind of notice it a little bit more when you go down over to the federal funds. If you look, all the revenue that has come in. Is for, is prior year revenue. So many of those federal funds, nothing's come in yet for the current year. Which makes sense because of the, of the way we have to ask for reimbursement for our federal funds. So we are not submitting until, so the month ends. We have some time to finalize the month, tie everything out, make sure all deposits have been calculated, make sure we tie, we have to balance the check. You know, the, the data cash, all the bank statements, everything has to be done. Before we submit this information. And so then what we're gonna do is we're gonna submit on the federal fund, we're gonna submit. The expense that has been processed so far. So we're always a month behind on that. And then once we process all that, submit that to, on the O B M S to the P E D. It typically is gonna take them time to go through it. It's gonna go through multiple approvers on their side. Then they're gonna send us a check. We're gonna go ahead and post that and it's not gonna post until we post. Until we update all the postings. So it really does take quite a bit of time. So it's not surprising that you're seeing a lot of these, the, the budgeted amount of revenue remaining is at a hundred percent. So. When it comes to, you're used to seeing the operational and. The operational and in this case, I'm looking, I'm comparing the current revenue that has come in, anything that was. Revenue to receive this year and that's because when it comes to operational, we estimate how we're, how much revenue we're gonna get. They give us one twelfth of that until any adjustments are made. So. When it, it's not surprising that operational's budget, the. Percentage remaining is at seventy five percent. And that's because we still have nine months left in the year, so it's nine months of the twelve is at the seventy five percent. Because your majority of all your money is coming in through the S E G. And you're gonna get one twelfth of it each month. Now, um. At the workshop you had mentioned, like with the student numbers going down. We will, after the fortieth day information gets submitted. Yeah, the P E D will take some time, but then they will send us something and adjust for fortieth day. So I would expect to see a bar coming in later on. Um, after fortieth day has been reviewed and see a reduction in that. Then we'll see a different amount of. And my budget of revenue will have to go down because I'll do a bar and so that amount of budget will be reduced. So. And then still, they're gonna then calculate that out and you're gonna see one twelfth each month. Received, but that'll be based on the new number. So, and there'll be some other. Small adjustments here and there that they tweak when they look at our special ed numbers and everything, everything will be looked at. And compared to the budget that went through. So anyway, and I have to apologize because at the end of this, it does say the total percentage. And I had not updated. The formula on, on this when I carried it over from some, from. Building it off of the expense, so. And, and I apologize, but I was in a big hurry to get on an airplane to send this off, so. The true number is eighty two percent, not over four hundred percent.
And say, wow.
Yeah.
Like how you make money. Okay, so we're sitting at eighty two percent.
Yes.
Right. I know that this was extra work, but thank you very much. I appreciate that we now have a little bit better knowledge.
And, and it does differ from the revenue report that you see in the list of reports because. The reports you're gonna find, you're gonna find that total revenue received. You're not gonna be able to see the difference between. Um, or here you can see what's current, what's prior.
Right, I appreciate it. Like I said, I know that this was extra work. And I, I just appreciate that you have responded to my request and that we can. Know these things and be accountable for them because it's, one, it's twenty five percent of our. Required statutory roles, so the more we know, the better we can operate. So thank you very much for that extra work, I appreciate it. And I apologize for the stress I'm getting on the place.
I was trying to see what I should do on this and not, and realizing, oh, I really need to take into account prior year. Because I ha, I even have a fund on here where. The amount we're budgeting, we already received more from last year than what we're budgeting for this year, so. It wouldn't make sense without putting in.
We'll say again and I'll say it out loud. What you have taught me between. How we get our money and how it's budgeted and then how it's allocated over the month and the process that we go through. I really think that you ought to be the one and only presenter at our state. Trainings that are required because I learned so much from you, so I appreciate it. Any questions from the board on this?
Uh, question?
Yes, for sure.
Superintendent Chavez, it's my understanding that the governor's called special session for October first. And I believe it's regarding federal. Federal monies, would you know a little bit?
Members of board, Dr. Osowski. Remember, Mr. Otero, what we have heard thus far is there is going to be great discussion regarding Medicaid specifically during the special session. Because our state has a large amount of our residents who qualify for Medicaid. And so when you look at the requirements from the one big beautiful bill and how that will impact the future of Medicaid. We are required, I believe it's by. January thirty first of twenty twenty six to have a plan in place. And then full implementation will follow the year after. It would impact how our residents qualify for Medicaid, so then that would directly impact our Medicaid school-based billing. So I believe that as part of the special session, Medicaid and continuous funding at the rate that it's currently funded for our state will be on the agenda. That is one big area that we are, we are watching very carefully because Los Angeles schools, as you can see from the budget presentation. We do receive quite a bit of funding from Medicaid. We do have quite a bit of students who qualify for special education services that then receive therapies that are. We do receive a reimbursement and we're able to bill for those services, so. That will be one of the agenda items discussed.
Can follow up, I think we discussed this some time back. So we're not gonna see an immediate impact. On the school district, but it, it is coming, right?
I believe it will be coming.
Thank you.
I'm not sure it will happen this current fiscal year, the fiscal year for the federal government ends. On September thirtieth and the new one begins October first. So it's yet to be determined what will happen in the new fiscal year for the federal government. But our fiscal years do not align between the state and the federal level. So as far as we know, for this current year that we're in, we should be okay. We'll see what happens years to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are great questions, Mr. Otero, something that we have to keep on our, definitely keep on our radar. You, you big meeting, I'm sure. Mrs. Chavez, thank you, Mrs. Tracy.
Thank you, Miss Tracy. Okay, last week, Los Angeles High School and Valencia High School celebrated Homecoming Week. It was a successful week throughout the district. Many of our schools participated in Spirit Week. Our students demonstrated exceptional school spirit. And thank you to our staff who coordinated all the events and made the week a success for our district. We continue to monitor enrollment on a weekly basis. Enrollment in our district is down from last year thus far. The forty day count is in October and we will continue to monitor our enrollment on a weekly basis. Next week is Parent Teacher Conference Week. Conferences will occur throughout the week this year and school will be on a routine schedule. So there will be, there will be school next week for students. I know that tradition has been that we have parent teacher conferences and students. Do not have school on that day, however.
However, it's a different format this year, so next week is a standard week, students will be in school. We would like to extend a very special thank you to Representative Brian, Brian Baca. He appropriated funds from this past legislative session to improve the audio and video system at Los Llanos High School Auditorium. Thank you very, very much, Representative Baca. We look forward to the project and its completion. The project is on our agenda this evening for board approval. Our after-school clubs at our school sites began this week. We encourage our students and their parents to view the club offerings at their child's school. There's many different clubs that are offered after school and I always look forward to seeing our students participate in those clubs. I want to give a little bit of the description regarding the number of school buses our district has been purchasing because we have been purchasing quite a bit of buses and we have an aging fleet. Prior to, I believe it was two or maybe three years ago, school buses that are on a standard route. That means they're, they're dropping students, picking up students from their bus stops within the community, taking them to school and bringing them home. They did not require air conditioning. Two or three years ago, it was mandated that our school buses now provide air conditioning. That was exclusive of our activity buses. So you've probably seen quite a bit of bus purchases on agendas and different ways to fund those buses. So last month, our school board approved the grant that provided funding for five new school buses. These were buses that go on our routes throughout our community. They are not our buses that are used for the activities when our students who compete in NMA activities travel around the state. These grants supported purchasing three new diesel buses and two new propane buses. We appreciate the grant, so we can, can replace some of those older buses. Tonight on our agenda, we have new designs for our activity buses. These buses were actually purchased last fiscal year and approved by our school board. And we have a new design for these new activity buses and we're really excited to showcase these designs. They are a departure from the traditional wraps that you've seen on our aging activity buses. So if you look, with the exception of the aqua windows, we do, we'll not have aqua windows, but we will have. If you look at the new designs, we have a new logo for our tigers and our jaguars. Because those are our school sites that are comprehensive and complete, compete in NMA activities. And you could see the new designs for weathered activity buses. If you flip to the next slide. You can see there's two different styles. There's a, and Mrs. Tracy, I'm going to get this wrong. There's a flat nose and a
And those are best with neck balls?
Yes.
Tissues will be provided.
Yes. So there's the flat nose and then there's the standard. So if you look at the two different, those are our full-size activity buses with the new logos and designs. And if you look at the eyes on this design in particular, the eyes will actually be reflective between our two mascots. So it'll be a completely different design than what you see driving up and down our interstates and highways throughout our state when we take our student athletes and our, uh, students who participate in activities to their activities. And then the third purchase that was approved by the school board last fiscal year is the shuttle bus. And I think if you slide down just a little bit more, thank you, Brian. This is the design for the shuttle buses. So we're excited. The buses are, are, are white. That's the, the background. And so I think this adds a taste of class and showcases who we are as a district. So we're very excited about those. So we are also going to be receiving, um, and we'll be taking it to the board next month. Some more, uh, funding for activity buses. Last year, our activity buses have reached their, their life extension or their end of life. And it was, it was challenging because we did have some of our student athletes go on very long road trips and our buses broke down. So that actually happened in, right at the beginning of winter. So I wanted to give an explanation of why we have so many buses coming through. So we're very excited with the showcase and thank you, Ms. Tracy, and the transportation team for looking at a different angle and seeing how we can enhance our new wraps. So we look forward to seeing those on the road very soon.
So it is a wrap, it's not a painting. I understood it was a painting and not a wrap. Is it still a wrap?
I, I believe. So I believe it's a wrap because, but it's not the entire wrap of all of the entire surface, uh, of the exterior.
Okay.
They still call it a wrap.
They still call it a wrap. Okay. Okay, so that was my miscommunication earlier, so I apologize. Thank you.
There are, and speaking of travel, we're in numerous road construction projects occurring in our community. We just had two projects recently that started. One that is in full swing within the re-renovation or remodel of the inter, per interchange in Los Llanos. So if you've been by the interchange lately, it, it's quite a challenge to get through because of the new construction project. We also were surprised yesterday morning because we knew it was coming, but we just didn't know what date when it would happen. But it was some construction, right, uh, the, uh, joint care. And so it's down to one lane going eastbound. So we continue to work with the village of Los Llanos officials as well as the Valencia County officials to stay updated on projects that impact traffic routes to our schools. And we are very thankful for our bus drivers who are patiently navigating the construction while safely driving our students to and from school. It's been a very busy square in this spot with numerous activities and some changes. I want to thank our staff and students for their continued dedication to our district. And it's hard to believe or believe it, but we are, we will be having our fall break Indigenous Peoples' Holiday in a few weeks. Students do not have school on Monday, October thirteenth and Tuesday, October fourteenth. Staff will have a professional development day on Tuesday, October fourteenth. Now with that, it concludes my report. If there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vickers, any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Otero?
No.
Mrs. Simoia, I just want to confirm on wrap, the colors are still appropriate, so we've got the turquoise and red, the orange is.
Yes, we do. It's hard to tell with those images, yeah. And then we have awkward blue windows.
That the eyes are retarded, especially in the middle of a month. Right, when you're driving beside it, you need lonely eyes so that you are just, you know, distracted as a driver. But I thought it sounds pretty cool. Okay. Item H, the superintendent of schools report is for informational purposes only. No action is needed or warranted at this time. I am over on item I, board commendations. And I will start to my left, Mr. Otero, any commendations you'd like to note, please?
Uh, Madam President, I, I kind of always have some difficulty with this one, but you know, I, I want to thank all the employees, uh, teachers, staff. And we have a diverse number of, of of employees here within the district. Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Mrs. Simoia?
Um, yes, Madam President, a couple of shout-outs, uh, first to the JAG ROTC. Uh, every time I see them present the colors, they do a phenomenal job where you let them know. And their volunteerism, um, both them and I believe Los Llanos High School ROTC also participated in the fair for cleanup. So wonderful servants of the community and great individuals, so I want to thank them. Uh, a shout-out to the JAG football team for competing with class. Um, every both games that I've got to witness, home games, I was very impressed. So thank you for that. And then finally, just a, just a thank you to the Peralta staff. That is really difficult to maintain the safety of the students with the, an active construction project going on. They run literally from the minute school gets out to get the kids to where they need to be, whether that's running across campus. Um, and they're doing just phenomenal jobs. So thank you for their patience. Um, they're making the best of a dusty situation and they're doing it so well. So thank you.
Terrific. So, um, I've already commented about the stadium at Los Llanos High School. I also enjoy, um, observing some of the Homecoming Week activities at Los Llanos High School. I did go to, uh, Los Llanos High School's Open House and I appreciated meeting with the staff um, that I did get to visit with. Um, that was the first time I had been in the new addition since it was built, so it was a, a treat to walk around. Um, I also want to commend our two high school principals on their perseverance with communication, um, across many different media. I see comments or communication about attendance, reminding about dress code. Reminding about, um, expectations for conduct and achievement. I see positive comments and praise. At the same time, I see reminders about expectations. And I really appreciate the outreach, um, that these two principals are doing. And, um, I look forward, I actually kind of look for their posts so I can see where we're improving. I appreciated seeing the nice bump in attendance rates, especially at Valencia High School. And I appreciated that Mrs. Otero put that out in the public so that we can all be understanding that is a student outcome. We are not only, uh, judged on, if you will, by our accountability measures, but it matters when it comes to other student outcomes. So it's something I imagine that the board will place in its strategic plan as a goal, so I appreciate that we're putting that out there. Um, a couple of weeks ago, at the opening high school football game at Los Llanos High School. The Tigerettes had a challenging situation. And those young ladies were so impressive because even with some challenges. They competed with class and maintained their composure and performed with, um, exceptional skill. Um, and I, the crowd was amazing in giving them the support that they needed. So, um, glitches happened, but the idea that our students could just persevere and get right through it and do it with a smile, I was very happy. And I've also been very happy, um, as Mrs. Simoia, um, noted, uh, the athletic events that I've been to. Our students, our staff, um, our student athletes. And, um, those in the stands have been also, for the most part, um, as we would expect from Los Llanos. So I want to thank all of those stakeholders very much for, uh, adhering to the compete with class. Um, that NMA has put out that the, this board supports bullying. Okay, we have.
I would, I would like to commend us. It's not just to show people, believe me. Take the spotlight out. Anyway, I would like to commend both high school principals because I, I have, I've visited both high schools and and the cleanliness is, is great. I mean, it's really wonderful. It's nice to see. And, and, and an extra kudos to Mr. Otero, because out there in the Anos, I, I did a victory lap around there and it was hard to find weeds. I mean, it, it looked beautiful. Thank you so much. I mean, it's been a long time, so it didn't. It's beautiful. It, it looks very nice. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, hardworking, sure. A victory lap?
Oh, yeah, got to do a victory lap around there.
She is somebody who needs attention.
Someone's got to take some.
Mr. Vickers. Uh, you guys stole all my thunder. I apologize for not looking to the right. The other night I didn't look to my left. Apologize very, very much. Okay, we are now over, and I believe if I'm following this correctly. We are now down to item L three three. The data links for LLHS Auditorium Phase Two, the A V improvements, three-one-four-zero-zero and three-one-two-zero-zero. Capital Outlay Special Appropriations and H B five-o-five C dash zero eight-six. This was on the consent agenda. I was the board member who dissented, so I will first start by letting, um, the public and my colleagues understand why I dissented. There's a kind of neat story behind this one. Um, lots of people coming together on this one. So I'm going to ask, I know Mrs. Chavez alluded to it in her summary, um, but I'm going to ask for her to, uh, there was a little bit more to that story. Remember from phase one and phase, going into phase two and some timing and that we've had staff involved? So if I can help, if you just briefly summarize for the public, the panel, and the motion to approve.
Yes, absolutely. Dr. Osowski, members of the board, I will invite Ms. Tracy to the podium so she can provide more detail regarding how this all came to be.
Okay, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Chavez. So, um, the Los Llanos High School Auditorium was in need of a lot of repairs. Um, updating, things, things were broke. Um, I know when I first came into this position, um, there, it was being looked at and it was looking like it was going to cost millions of dollars, so. And I was like, oh, gosh, um, I need to look at this budget and see if that's something we can afford. And I was, you know, I was like, trying to find other ideas, other ways. I know I, um, went over to curriculum and I could care, purpose to do something for this or whatever. Um, it was all kinds of, you know, how, how could we make this happen? Uh, so what we did do is in phase one, we did do a, a smaller amount of, of, of things on that, um, a lot of, uh, drama, um, drama type of things like that. And so we just did what we could do, what we thought we could afford at the time. Um, after that, we were able to find another vendor that we found to be way more in line of something that we can afford. So, um, then Tiffany wrote, um, build out for, for state appropriations. And we had the, um, we had our representative Baca was able to, um, help on through that so for us. So it, we received well of the majority of the costs will be covered by the state legislation. Um, grant that we are given, small part is going to also come out of our, um, public outlay funds that we have, so. But the majority will be taken care of and thank goodness we didn't attempt to try and do it, um, with the other larger, larger bill. This is way more, way, way different.
And I, I also understand that that was that our contractor is able to work between some rather challenging schedules with the fall activities that happen up at that auditorium.
Yes.
So he took in the teacher's schedules and the, and whatnot.
Well, our schedule's not set yet, so once we have a purchase order, uh, Tiffany will work with them. Also, she's going to have to work with, with band drama and they're going to go, um, they're going to have to also get with the contractor. So all of that hasn't been done, but we're in touch with everyone and everyone knows that um, it's going to have to be a time that we can agree. And it may have to have a section done at this time, within a section done at this time if there's an event in the middle, so. But we know not to schedule this and have it done when, when events. There was, um, there was an event, I believe, uh, they were, they were concerned about, but that event date has changed. And, and we will see what the, what the construction, uh, what the contractor will be able to do. And we'll make sure that it's fit in between, even if it has to be broken up.
Thank you very much. This was my dissent, so I will make the motion. I would move to approve item L three B data links incorporated in a sizable auditorium phase two, A V improvements out of funds three-one-four-zero-zero and three-one-two-zero-zero. Capital Outlay Special Appropriations and H B five-o-five C dash zero eight-six.
Our second motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Otero or Mrs. Simoia? But this one.
Put your name after your girl.
You are. Is there any discussion? We're losing it up here. That's it. That's all. We're, we're done. Is, is any discussion?
Just one last comment, uh, a thank you to Mr. Baca for this, and Senator Baca for this.
Yes.
I really appreciate the concern and knowing what we needed, so, thank you.
Absolutely. It's part of the reason I wanted the board to hear this. Any other discussion? I will call for the vote, Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
Mr. Otero?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes five-zero. We are over on, my goodness, this is just, I'm going to just keep going. Feels like I have pages and pages. Item M, new business. Board member requests for topics for upcoming board work sessions or board meetings. I will let you know that I've gone through my list. We have a couple of topics still that we would like to have. We have a couple of topics still that we would like to have done. In October and November, we only have about two to three, if my list is correct, to finish out going into December, other than board policies and the strategic plan. But having said that, is there any other new topics from the board members that you would like to see? None?
No, I think we need to stick with strategic plan and policies right now.
Right, I agree. Okay, thank you very much. This is, this is for information for the purpose of gathering input. There is no action that is needed at this time. We are on to item M, N, the announcement of meetings. This brings us to the announcement of meetings as allowed by the Open Meetings Act and the District Open Meetings Resolution. On occasion, a quorum of the board members attend the same function, including school and district celebrations and ceremonies, as well as sports functions, conferences, workshops, trainings, and community events. Board members will refrain from discussing or acting on Los Angeles Schools Board of Education issues in those settings. In addition, only official meetings are published and if other meetings are scheduled, they will be announced in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. With that being said, I would like to announce the following meetings. September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, New Mexico School Board Association Region Four Fall Meeting in Albuquerque, New Mexico, from five thirty to eight thirty PM in the evening. This will be held at the Alice and Bruce King Educational Complex located at sixty four hundred Uptown Boulevard, North D, Northeast in Albuquerque, New Mexico. This is for school board training purposes only. No decisions will be made. A quorum of the board may be in attendance. On October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, the Audit Committee meeting in the Central Office Conference Room, that will begin at three thirty PM and attendance is by invitation only. Also, on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, the Finance Committee meeting, which will be held in the Central Office Conference Room at four o'clock PM. On October twenty first, twenty twenty five, a board work session in the Central Office Board Room that will begin at four thirty PM. Topics will be listed on the, on the notice and the agenda. A quorum of the board will be in attendance. This is discussion only. No decisions will be made. And on October twenty first, twenty twenty five, the regular board meeting, which will be in the Central Office Board Room at six o'clock PM. At this time, we are going to item O, closed executive session. Closed executive session for limited personnel matters, specifically September twenty twenty five check-in on the superintendent's performance. This is contractually required. This is pursuant to NMSA ten dash fifteen dash one H two. A quorum of the board is in attendance. There will be discussion only. No action will be taken. I would stand for a motion to go into closed executive session. I move to go into closed executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Moving for the vote. Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Otero?
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is passed. Board will take a brief recess and be in executive session, closed executive session about seven thirty five. Yeah.
I think that's what makes our executive house and taking for it. It's other than my phone.
In line.
And so it would be you.
And lots of it's just.
The only. Men's phone. Nice.
That's fine.
Carrie, we can remind you at the time that we had to post before.
Seven thirty five.
I would like.
I would stand for a motion to go into ra- into regular session.
The moon.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Simoia. I have a motion by Mr. Bennett and a second from Mrs. Simoia to go into back into regular session. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia.
Yes.
Mr. O'Tarrell.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passes five zero. The board is back in regular session at nine thirty P M. We're on item P, report on closed executive session. As announced, the Los Angeles Schools Board of Education went into closed executive session at seven thirty five P M. As stated in the motion, the discussion in closed executive session was for limited personnel matters, specifically September twenty twenty five check-in on superintendent's performance, which is a contractually required activity pursuant to New Mexico statutes annotated ten dash fifteen dash one H two, and a quorum was in attendance. Discussion occurred, only discussion occurred, no action was taken. I attest that no other topics were discussed than those listed in the motion, and that no action was taken during the closed executive session. We are on item Q adjournment. This leads us to the adjournment at the meeting. I would stand for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Vickers.
Out of my left or out of my right field. Fly ball. I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Mrs. Simoia.
Yes.
Mister.
Yes.
I vote yes enthusiastically, this vote is meeting is.
It's urgent.
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Vickers go home.